The meeting to order, the meeting of the Gallup McKinley County Schools Board of Education. Roque Hall, John.
Charles Long. Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Michael Shaw.
Here.
Priscilla Manulito.
Here.
Kevin Mitchell.
We have four board members present and Mr. Kevin Mitchell has been excused from the meeting. He has other things that he's taken care of. So let's do the pledge of allegiance. And New Mexico pledge. Priscilla, can you help us please? Thank you, Priscilla. Thank you, board members in attendance. Thank you, George Superintendent Mike, Assistant Superintendents. Good evening. Never made it out of the starting gate, the Denver Broncos. Anyway, let's continue with our meeting. Let's go down to item B. Approval of the agenda.
Present long members of the board, I have two items I need to remove from the agenda. The first one's under study circle. Number four, through high school senior class trip presentation. That is being moved to the next meeting.
That's number four, right?
Yes. And also under number six A, approval of dissertation request. That person's unable to make it tonight to do the presentation and to be able to answer questions. And so we will also move that to the next meeting.
Okay. With those corrections on the agenda, what is the pleasure of the board?
The move that we approve the agenda, tonight's agenda.
Okay. As amended, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion's been made, John?
Chris Mortensen.
Yes.
Michael Shaw.
Yes.
Priscilla.
Yes.
Kevin Mitchell.
Yes. Okay. Motion carries. We approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Thank you, board members at camp. Thank you so much. Uh, let's go down to item three, approval of meeting. One from the December 11th, twenty seventeen meeting, the other one, January 8th, twenty eighteen meeting. And I believe that board members, you've received your board packet now and you had sufficient time to review the board packet and all that. So what is the pleasure of the board? And I think we moved the December 11th meeting minutes here because there was some clarifications that needed to be made or corrections. And I believe Priscilla's the one that wanted corrections made.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I think at the last meeting, we had talked about, just in terms of those meetings, those minutes, just making sure that, that the, not necessarily that those things were taken out, but the, but that the minutes were looked at again relative to the videotape to make sure they were accurate. I think that was, I mean, I think that was the main issue. I mean, as long as, as long as these minutes have been adjusted to reflect what was really said, I, I moved that we approved them.
Okay. Uh, motions been made to approve both meeting minutes. Uh, Roque Hall, John?
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Thank you, board members at camp. Let's go down to item number four, approval of consent agenda items.
Mr. Long, I'll go ahead and move to approve consent item agenda.
Thank you, Priscilla. Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda items. Roque Hall, John?
Ms. Manulito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes. Okay. At camp, thank you. Approve the consent agenda items. Let's go down to study circle, public comment. There's none for this evening, so let's go down to B, reports. Superintendent's report, Mike?
Yes, present long members of the board. I only have a few items I was going to touch on this evening. One is, I think I've updated most of you verbally. Just want to give you a quick update on McKinley Academy and the progress in that career pathway that we are offering for students next year. We have had four community meetings, totaling seven hundred people that have attended those community, community meetings thus far. We have three more meetings to have within the next week. And so there's been an incredible number of people that responded and have interest in learning at least more about this opportunity for our students and the community. Again, I have also met with the governor, I guess we could start with, along with several legislators, along with, uh, who else have we had? I've met with the county commissioners recently, um, also met with the chamber here in Gallup to talk about, a little bit about vision for the future for career pathways for students across the county. And have had some great questions and some great comments, even some concerns that have been great to hear so we can make adjustments as necessary, so we can best meet the needs of our students. And so I thought that might be interesting for you all to hear about the response in career pathways. I also wanted to talk a quick, a minute about the legislative session.
Mr. Hyatt, before you move on.
Sure.
I attended the parent teacher conference today for my son and I had a couple of parents and, um, come to me and asked me a couple of, um, or addressed some concerns. Um, I answered most of them. Some I didn't know and, um, one of them is with McKinley Academy, um, I, I, I remember you kind of talking about this and I wasn't too sure and I didn't feel too comfortable answering it. But at the local school level, will their academic or their grade scores, um, be counted? And would that be counted for their schools? So will that improve their grades or scoring at their local school level?
Yes, it will. Anytime a student is enrolled in dual credit, that provides career readiness opportunity points within the school grade. And so anything that's earned as a student attending the academy, all of those scores, state test scores, classes they take, et cetera, will, they're still a student at, at their home high school. So if they're a through high school student, all of their test scores, et cetera, will be attributed to the through high school grade. No one else in the district receives credit for that.
Okay. And the other question I had was, we finally got our, um, Theroux band back a few years ago. We, we had it taken away and then now we've got it back and we, we worked really hard getting our band back. And this, I, I think it's just for fine arts across the district and in any levels of fine art. If the numbers of the fine arts, because we all know that fine arts is linked with students that are doing well, students that do very well, that take, that like to do music, band, um, those kind of classes. And if the numbers go down, how will that affect those fine arts courses that are in our schools? And, you know, one of the things that I was kind of mentioning to the parent was, maybe we need to start a discussion with our principal. I always hear back of what, um, one of our superintendent used, mentioned to my son one time was, always think of a solution. You think of, you think of the problems, you always have the list of the problems, but what can be a solution? And, or, you know, one thing I thought about was maybe that music teacher, you know, going into the classroom and talk, teaching, um, about music technology, having a music tech lab or software, you know, something doing with software or digital storytelling or digital music making or, you know, those kind of, where they're in the classroom, not so much playing the instruments or, you know, something to that effect. Is the, are those possibilities that if the numbers in, I'm using band because, you know, that, that was the class that I came out of when the parent was talking to me about it was, how does that, how will this affect our band or our fine arts, excuse me? And then if we can get to continue those programs, but think of more creative ways to continue to bring the interests of our children there.
This is Manulito. I think it's a great question and some great insight on what we could do. I think sometimes our, I'll use band as an example, is not promoted the way that needs to be. I'm not saying, knocking every single program, but I think we as a district, as school sites, could promote those opportunities for students more in our schools. So I think that's one thing that we could do to help promote it, is simply promote it. But I also understand what you're saying too, providing more access in different ways so that they become more interested is also something that we could encourage our principals and make sure that that's happening in our school sites. Yeah, it is true. If a student is not in school, they're not going to be able to take the band class. And so that doesn't limit outside of school opportunities. And so I think that music programs, there's some opportunities to be creative and still offering opportunities and maybe even a different course schedule where those students could still get the instruction and be able to participate with their fellow band participants so that the program continues. With a school of, let's say, through over three hundred and fifty students or so, it shouldn't be hard to get a good band together and if one or two students leave, and still be able to participate after school, I think this program can still survive. But if not, yeah, we're going to look at different opportunities to provide students who are encouraged to be a part of those extra progressive.
And I just wanted to mention, um, attending that commissioner, county commissioner meeting with you, you know, it was, it was weird and I think we were, we were both surprised to hear and that, um, that was the first time that a superintendent came, um, to the county commissioner and gave a report. And I think that just shows how involved we're trying to get with our communities and our leaders, our other leaders in our, in our area. And I just thought that was a big accomplishment for us again, that we're making, we're connecting bridges within the city. So, thank you.
Question? Other questions? No. Go ahead, proceed.
Present long members of the board, the last topic again was legislative session. Obviously, there's a, there's still a lot of time to go before anything goes to the governor's office or goes to the floor and then goes to the governor's office for approval. But we are excited and optimistic with what we're hearing and seeing with respect to funding for education. We just saw a unit value increase that Ms. Hanks will talk about this evening. That's a positive trend. There's obviously hundreds of millions more dollars this year than there was last year. And so legislature, along with the governor, will need to figure out where that money is to go. And again, there seems to be a lot of steam in order, in funding education more appropriately, including raises. And they're talking about at least one bill is talking about giving us back our cash balances that were swept. And so we, we obviously are, it's encouraging to hear those words, those bills coming forward. There are several pieces of legislation that are just flying all over the place and getting dropped and tabled and things sprouting up in other areas and it's kind of a complicated system. But we'll keep you updated by email of what's, what's transpiring. And that's all I have for this evening.
Under those bills that I guess we're supporting, like pay increases for teachers and others. When those bills reach the governor's desk, uh, as a board and your office, my assistant superintendents, do we need to, um, maybe encourage the governor to sign those?
I think anytime advocating them on behalf of our students to legislators or the governor is a healthy thing to do. We have had a lot of support from our local legislators. They've done a great job for us and anything that we ask them to do. And so we just need to continue to work on the others.
Because, you know, normally sometimes, you know, she'll be those bills that we support that's going to benefit school districts. I guess something like that to happen to any bills that's going to be beneficial to us. Nothing to lobby the governor's office and the governor should be something that would be important for us to do.
Can I add one quick thing? I just want to make sure that those pay increases are not just for teachers. We're, we're advocating for all staff increases.
Yes.
And sometimes when they talk about education, they talk teachers, but there's a lot of employees, all employees that we have contribute to the education of our students. So we're advocating for all.
I think during our, um, roundtable discussion with the governor and several entities of McKinley County, one of the concern the government, I mean, excuse me, the governor had was part of that House Bill Two. And it wasn't the pay increase, it was some, it was, was it like, uh, oh goodness, there was money, was it enrichment programs or something she was really concerned about? The funding af, you know, once the, there was the salaries and, you know, all that, the, um, the instructional staff and, you know, the two percent, all of that was fine. I think she really stressed that was a good thing. But there was funding after that. I don't, I don't know if it was, it's not below the line.
Below the line was talked about.
Yeah. I don't know, was it, was it those concerns that she said there was like so many things wrong?
The, the House Bill Two, I believe, had some errors in it and had to be fixed. But I do remember I specifically brought up below the line funding and how important that is to our district and how it's helped us to, that partnership with PED has helped us improve as a district academically for our students. When I brought that up, she mentioned that it had been cut by ten million dollars, I think, compared to what it was or, or was, was being asked for. I know that she, she was concerned about that. And so obviously, as you all know, I went to at least one of the committees before the legislative session and advocated on behalf of that below the line funding. And I just think that her and I have some common ground as a district, we have some common ground with her in knowing that that money goes for good purposes. K three plus funding, teacher and principal leadership training, and the list goes on and on pre-K. She's obviously always a advocate for early childhood education also and a need for that and we have a high need of that in our district. And so I believe that's what was talked about. We had a couple other assistant superintendents there. Do you guys remember anything additional than below the line funding that she was talking about?
Yeah.
Also the incentive pay, yeah, for teacher compliance.
I think the other concern that, um, New Mexico School Board Association also had was, I don't have the House number, the House Bill number, but it's the, it's the one where's, um, there's entities that are trying to take our budget, um, what the board, the school board is, um, overseas is the part of the school budget. So they're trying to take that, um, is the way I kind of understood it, um, out from underneath the board. And I think that if I can find, I know Kevin mentioned it, the, I don't know if it's a Senate bill or House bill, that I think we need to also look for. The other thing I wanted to mention is, um, the booklet that we came up with, um, with, the staff came up, um, and contributed to giving this to, um, all our legislators and I think Metecon Jay also, um, handed out a lot of these books. And I, I just reviewed it and there's wonderful, wonderful information about our school district in here and you guys did a phenomenal job on this. And it's just a real quick little booklet that, um, our legislators can look at and, you know, take a bird's eye view of what our district is all about. And I just want to thank the staff. This is something that we've been asking for and we finally got it. And I had a couple extra after the gala that I picked up and any, I was worried that someone might have not received it. But everybody's like, yeah, we seen it, we got it. You know, every time we went into one of our senators or representative's office, you know, they, they said that they, they did receive it. So thank you so much for this, um, to Mr. Hyatt and to your staff for this gala.
Absolutely. Our staff did a great job. I think we, we, as far as advocating and educating legislators about our district, I think we did a great job, or at least a better job than we have.
Okay. Uh, let's move forward to report number two, athletic update.
Present long members of the board, I asked this evening for coordinator for athletics, Ben Chavez, to come do an update. One of the, he'll talk about a few different things, but one of the things I wanted to make sure our community understood and that we need to make sure that we educate our parents and students on is some of the changes with respect to grading for next year for those students wishing to participate in athletics. So I'll turn the time over to Mr. Chavez for his report.
There we go. Again, uh, so I wanted to take the opportunity to, uh, kind of clarify some of the changes that the NMAA has made over the past few weeks that will definitely affect everyone in the state, but to try to pinpoint some of the changes for Gallup McKinley County schools. As you know, every four or five years or so, the NMAA likes to shake things up a little bit. They do base it off of both votes from athletic directors, coaches and other, uh, parties that are associated with athletics. And so, um, they took into consideration student enrollment and they redistrict the entire state. Uh, it will directly affect every school in Gallup McKinley County. So basically the changes are, there will be five new classifications based off of enrollment, student numbers that were taken from the 40th and 80th day counts. Gallup McKinley County schools, for the most part, every school will now drop one district. So we'll give you a prime example. Gallup High School was five A this year. Beginning next year for the 2018 nineteen, uh, school year, Gallup High School will drop to four A. Um, so the major, the other major change is that although most schools are dropping in one class based off of student enrollment, they increased the football portion of the athletic breaking up into seven different classifications. So, uh, I jotted down just a few of the major changes and then if you have further questions on what school's going to be where, uh, you can, you can ask me and hopefully I can answer those for you. So Gallup High School next year will drop to four A for athletic competition. Theroux will drop to three A in athletic competition. Myamura and all the other schools will drop one classification. So Myamura will compete in four A in every sport except for football. Myamura will be the only school that remains in five A for football. So it's kind of a goofy calculation the way they did it for football, but, uh, based off of student enrollment and participation numbers, uh, as well. Do you have any questions on a specific school?
What about New England?
No, I'm just kidding. New England is going to the, no, I'm just kidding. They'll be competing with, yes.
Not, not in school, but, um, one of the concerns that, um, I heard a lot going to the games is why, why was a five A school playing a three A school or a four A school? Because it was either, if, if the five A lost to the lower, um, A school, what didn't look good on the five A. But then even if the five A won, they were still criticized because they're playing a lower A school. So they did, that was not, in, in a lot of people's eyes, win or lose, it was like, what's going on here? Why are they competing at different A levels?
That's an excellent question. And I've always said it, it's, uh, scheduling is, is, uh, it's an art and you've got to be good at it because the way, the way it is now, unfortunately, the, the, uh, in order to qualify for state, you have to make, you know, the, the top twelve teams in the state. And so the strength of schedule definitely has a lot to do with, with that deciding factor. You know, you do get to, um, the NMAA choice where they have the committee and they actually vote on who gets to, to play who in the state playoffs. I agree with you that the, this difficulty of schedule is a, is a major thing. In sports like basketball, uh, I, I think that it is good for schools like Gallup McKinley County, if Gallup High School is holding an invitational, to invite some of the other local schools. When you get down to football, which is obviously, uh, ten game max, those, those games, you, you've got to take into consideration. And ultimately, it's the local, the local schools that have the autonomy to choose their own schedules and their athletic directors are, are responsible for working with the coach and, and making those schedules. I agree with you, there were some questionable contests that occurred this year and, uh, you know, it, it worked out good for the smaller schools. You know, when it came to making, uh, state playoffs or, or really looking good on, on their, on their win-loss record, it was a, it was a, it was a plus for them. And for the larger schools, it, it was, you know, kind of a black eye. But, uh, one of the things we will definitely do this summer is, um, making sure that the athletic directors are taking all those things into consideration because it does not only affect the schools but the community and it raises questions and, and, uh, people start thinking, are you doing it just to, to make more money or, or to get more gate receipts? And, and we'll try to clarify some of those things.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions on the classification?
I, I do, but it's a mid-school question. So I don't know if you want me to?
Go ahead. I'll try to answer it right now.
Okay. It's, it's still with zoning too, our, our district. I don't know what, what they call it. But, you know, for the mid-school level, um, I know that I, I attend a lot of games in, in different areas. And one of, when I was at the mid-school, um, the game, there was a concern that we're doing a lot of traveling from Theroux to Pine Hill, Rayma Zuni. And those are, and they're wondering, why aren't we playing local school, um, not local, but closer schools like Crompoint or, you know, here in Gallup? You know, why are we, it's like, those are the fourths, and we played them twice or something. So those were the concerns, the traveling concerns and, you know, I, I know the weather hasn't been bad, so that hasn't been a concern.
Right.
But if the weather was bad, that would be a huge concern.
Sure, sure. So to answer your question, I mean, middle school athletics, having it at the competitive level that, that we've had, we're only in our third year now. So we're still trying to work out the, the kinks and wrinkles from, from that. To answer your question, what we try to do is all the mid-school athletic directors, from not just Gallup McKinley County schools, but from all our area schools, meet and they come up with their own little NMAA classification. So basically what they do is they pick four or five schools that would, would play each other for this rotation. And I think that Theroux fell into the Pine Hill and, uh, the, the other ones where they traveled. Next year, they will shift that up. Matter of fact, we have a mid-school athletic directors meeting coming up Thursday at Kennedy Mid-School where we will take the schools, kind of throw them back into a hat and say, okay, so this year, group A is going to be Rayma, Gallup Mid-School, Chief, Kohachi. And so they kind of try to break it up like that. So it shouldn't be consistently where, where Theroux is having to travel the furthest every time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So the last thing I wanted to, to talk about, and this will directly affect all athletes in the state of New Mexico, is that for 2018, uh, the 2018, 2019 school year, the NMAA, through a vote that was taken by, uh, all coaches and athletic directors, eligibility will be changed. They will no longer be allowing athletics or athletes to, to be determined eligible or ineligible every nine weeks. They have now changed it so that eligibility will only be counted once a semester. In other words, uh, if a student is academically ineligible after the last grading period in May, they would be ineligible the entire following nine weeks. They would only be allowed to become eligible if they had raised their grades after the nine weeks. So long story short, uh, if a player's ineligible, he will be eligible for an entire semester. We won't make anyone ineligible until those semester grades come out. Uh, the other major change is that it used to be every student had to maintain, maintain a two point oh grade point average with no The other major change is that it used to be every student had to maintain, maintain a 2.0 grade point average with no more than one F. The NMAA has now voted and said, student athletes will not be allowed to have any Fs on their report card when it is that semester. So any student that has an F will now be ineligible academically to, to play in athletics. Now, the, the, the good thing is that although we cannot make anyone ineligible after nine weeks, we can activate students who do get their grades up at our nine weeks grading period. So a student who, let's say, did have an F, that at nine weeks brought that F up, they would be able to become eligible and start participating.
Questions?
Another question?
Yes, sir.
One of the things in here is about summer courses. Do we, you know, like in the example you said, if their grades are lousy at the end of the semester in, in May, they are ineligible. But this thing says they can make the classes up over the summer. Do we have, are all the, pretty much all classes we have available during the summer for, for kids to make up eligibility like during the summer?
For the most part, yes, as long as the school is offering it. Again, that's based off of the enrollment numbers or students who have signed up for a specific class. Traditionally, the NMAA policy was that you could only make up one F per summer. So that way, let's say, a, a football player that failed three classes couldn't just say, oh, just take these summer school courses. That is what, what has changed now, is they're saying you can take more than one summer school course. It has to be the same though, so if you failed Algebra I, you would have to take an Algebra I. You couldn't just take a math class, get an A and push your GPA up. So it, it's one of those give and take, the NMAA is kind of being more lenient, but being a little firmer.
Yeah, Mr. Mortensen, it's not all classes, you typically only math.
Right, electives, we, we don't know.
I would assume that Gallup High and Myamura probably offer more summer school classes than some of the, some of the schools, the smaller schools that are out in the county can, do, do kids that are out in the county, do they have the ability to come in town and make up classes at Gallup High and Myamura?
Mr. Mortensen, actually, there's probably less courses offered in Gallup in the summer than are per number of teachers per student.
What you're saying surprises me.
So we, we try to fit everybody's needs. If they need more, we're willing to allocate more staffing for the summer to offer courses. We try to meet the demand the best that we can. We have not specifically talked about other schools coming into town or vice versa to take courses. Again, we just try to meet the needs of the students that need summer school credit and try to offer that for them at their school site. But there is no reason why we couldn't look at that if something wasn't offered. Obviously, there's going to be a bigger demand if, if this is going to be, as this is going to be real.
Might make, you know, I don't know if it, you know, if it worth looking at, it might make financial sense to, you know, to allow kids from the county areas to come in and, and take summer, summer school, you know, in Gallup High, I don't know, it's not my sense.
My, my question, thank you, sir. My question, for us, for our district, we are an athletic district. Oh, we, this is everybody's concern. And how, my, my concern is how are we getting this out there? What are, what are you and your staff going to do to let everybody know? I, I know the, the thing where it goes to the principal doesn't work because then the athletic director or the coach themselves say, we never got that memo. So how are, and then it doesn't go out to the parent. We need to, this, this is information that we need to get out there to our parents. And I think with them knowing these, knowing this before, the sooner the better, you know.
Yes, absolutely, and we've already arranged with Terry Fraser and Vanessa Duckett to make sure that this handout that you see here will be available on the Gallup McKinley County webpage. I found that the best way to relay information to the coaches and the parents is to make sure that the athletic directors are directly giving these, these, this information out in their coaches' meetings. We do have an athletic directors' meeting planned for next week where we will go over all these changes and explain to them how they will be implemented and displayed in our new athletic handbook. So we'll make sure that the parents and everyone else becomes aware of all these changes.
I could add, Ms. Mangalito, we'll also push that out through our social media. I don't, I think this is appropriate to put in newspapers if we can, Giovanna. And then also, I'm sure we could fit in a Power School announcement that we, we can reach every single parent in, in student in the county. So that, that, it's not too hard to say you can no longer receive any apps to play. That's probably the, that's probably the biggest change.
So this is effective now?
No, it'll be effective next school year, beginning in August, correct.
But the courses that are now, factor into next year.
Well, definitely emphasize that you need to tell all your students, your athletes, and anyone that plans on participating next year, you cannot fail any classes this last fourth quarter, or you will be ineligible.
Any other questions?
I do, but not on this, on athletic questions, I do. My first one is, if, if you're a senior playing any sport, are you allowed to play a JV, on a JV team? Maybe your skills are not as good to play on the varsity team, but they may be pretty good to play on the JV team.
So the best way to answer this is usually only if a student has an IEP or special needs. And that has to be an agreement that the NMAA has, has, has looked at. Traditionally, it's kind of a gentleman's agreement that coaches don't place seniors down at lower levels. It, it's just, it's unethical, so the NMAA does step in and try to regulate that.
Thank you. And my other question is with the coaches, are we all, are, are they all assigned now? Do we have, or is there still openings for coaches?
There are still openings and personnel will probably be the, the, the better people to ask on that. But what I can tell you is that we've talked, Mr. Hyatt and I and, and Mr. Bond have talked about, if a coach is a full-time employee, basically a, a contracted employee of the district, and the principal wanted them to remain, they would not have to reopen that position. But for the most part, anyone else, they, they would open those, those positions for, you know. Obviously, we want to try to recruit teachers and get teachers or certified staff that are coming into the schools to be, to be our coaches. Because the stability is always better when you have a person that's working in the school that is also working directly with the athletes.
Do we still have a rule or is an MMA rule that we cannot have coaches coached to head, in two head positions?
I can, I can answer that one. This is Mangalito, we do have that rule, but we do change that rule if there's a high need in an area. And there are several reasons why we don't want, for example, a teacher teaching multiple sports. Probably the two main reasons is one, whenever you're coaching, it does affect your teaching because of the, the time and stress and et cetera. When you're leading a team at night, when they do multiple sports, it just compounds that. Also, when students have the same coach over and over, let's say, a student, a male athlete has the same coach for basketball or football, then basketball, and then track, for example. Then, you know, sometimes, sometimes athletes need a break from a person also. And you give them a different chance for somebody else to view them so that their feelings about the athleticism of that student or that student athlete doesn't affect them the next season. Like, those are a couple of the reasons. Also, it provides opportunities for other people to be involved in athletics, which I think is important. But again, if there isn't, if we can't find somebody, then we will look at all the options that we can to help make sure students take care of themselves.
So that's a district rule?
Yes.
Our district policy, not at NMAA? And one more question, or one more concern. Who's allowed to be in a practice of, with our students? Are they just supposed to be the licensed individuals that have taken the course, the MMA courses?
Yes, so, so personnel has really been doing a good job in trying to regulate who is having direct contact with our students. And they have to at least have completed their volunteer paperwork and their background check through the personnel office before they're to have contact with our students.
Could you please check on the schools, that that is being upheld? Because I keep hearing concerns that we have coaches, kids that are on the courts with our students.
We are looking into that, Ms. Mangalito. There's always time, we look, we're looking at all schools and we continually do. It's hard to catch every single practice time at every single time across the district. We are aware of the concerns and we have been looking at it.
And the last one was the uniforms, but I'll get that from you later. Thank you, sir.
No problem, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. No other questions for Ben? Thank you, Ben. Let's go down to report number three, budget update.
President Long, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, members in the audience. I did provide you a packet with some good resource information. The overview page is a separate page and that's kind of what we're going to go through this evening. And I'm definitely open to take any questions that you'd like to ask. Within your packet, one of the things that we look at when we look at our budget is our framework. So everything that we do, I always like to say a budget is actually a list of your priorities. So in order for us to understand the framework that we want, that we're under, we look at the rigor, the relationship and the relevance and all the purchases that we make. We want to see the connection to academics directly. We want to make sure that we're making an impact in the classroom with the dollars that we spend. Encouraging parental involvement, we all know how important it is to have our parents involved with their students and making sure that they're getting a quality education. And then cultural, cultural being on many different levels. But just making sure that we're open in what we're doing throughout the district. There's a budget expenditure report attached, it is a one-line summary per fund. So as you look at that, you're going to see the budget, any budget adjustments that you as the board have approved, the final general ledger budget, the current month's expenditures, and this is the January report, the year-to-date expenditures, the budget balance after that, any encumbrances. Encumbrances are likely at this point salaries and benefits for our employees. And some pending miscellaneous potential equipment or professional development, a remaining budget balance, and then a percentage based upon the original budget. As you go through there, one of the things that you're probably most familiar with is the operational account. Please keep in mind that we do have a $2.5 million emergency reserve that's budgeted in our operational fund. And that our utilities are taken out on a monthly basis and we have about $1.5 million left in utilities to be taken out for this year. That's electricity, natural gas, heating. And then in addition to that, that the operational fund is liable for the revenue bond payment at the end of the year, which is typically between $2.7 and $3.5 million, depending on what issuances are being retired during that year.
I'm sorry, Giovanna, you said $2.7 to?
To $3.5. And it does depend on which year, because we have staggered those revenue bonds with principal and interest payments per year. Now, each of you may not be as familiar with the other funds that you see there. So on the next several pages, which are page four through 11, I have actually listed out all the other funds and the name of that fund and their oversight agency and principal purpose. Just in case, as it is for me, I tend to say I speak gibberish because we are a fund-based accounting, so we do have several different diverse funds that are targeted at specific initiatives. And so I have lined those out for your information. My Superintendent Hyatt was speaking briefly. If we remember about this time last year, the state legislature had already been met in special session. From our district, they took a cash balance back from us of approximately $1.3 million. And then they also added a reduction of the state equalization guarantee, which removed another $1.6 million. So in total, we lost around this time last year, $3 million from our budget. We are definitely not in that same fiscal position this year with the state. We did just receive a final funded unit value that was released January 31st, as is required by New Mexico State statute. There was a less than 1% increase, which was about $30 per unit. And for our district, that's going to mean an increase of approximately $637,000. I did also include for you, I know that there's been a lot of information going out about the legislature. On page 15 of your packet through page 31 is a listing of all the legislation and a short synopsis of it that's been filed through January 29th. There have been several other bills that have actually come out since then and I will continue to keep the board updated on those. Please remember that you may be hearing lots of things coming out of the legislature, but until it's received approval from both houses and a signature of the governor, there's nothing that the school district can do with that information. We are staying abreast of anything that's coming out of the legislature and we are communicating with our legislators to advocate on the school district's behalf. But it does require both passing of both houses and a signature of the governor. Many of you know that this governor would not be shy to line item veto and/or put us back into a special session if things come across her desk that she does not agree with. So we just take it as, as those, that information comes out, we try to work with it as quickly as possible. Impact aid. So many of you may be aware that we're working on continuing resolutions at the federal level. Our next deadline is coming up this Friday. That impacts the school district directly for impact aid payments. So the school district receives its impact aid payments directly from the US Department of Education in Washington. And they are only able to distribute based upon appropriation. And because we're still working on a continuing resolution at the federal level, we're currently at a 50% distribution out of a potential 100%. We had budgeted an approximate 70%, so right now, we are short $2.1 million of anticipated revenue that we had anticipated receiving by this point. I do communicate regularly with the director of the Impact Aid Office in Washington. She does feel confident that we may still be able to get that distribution if there is a budget resolution at the federal level. However, if there is not, then our, our revenue projection will need to be revised downward. The only kind of good piece about that is the 75% credit taken by the state will actually mean that we will only take the impact of 75% of that $2.1 million, which would be a decrease potentially of $525,000. That is something that the district attempts to anticipate annually. Unfortunately, there is just not a lot of control that we have over it. And again, for your information on page 32 and 33, I've given you the history of impact aid payments from FY 11 to present. And then also a short calculation of how impact aid is actually taken into consideration for credit by the state. The last thing is just, the last couple of pages is the calculation of the state equalization guarantee. This is a multi-step formula and I just kind of want to keep you guys informed of this. We just closed our 80th day reporting date, our 120th day is coming up on February 14th. As soon as that window is closed, we'll actually know our projections for next year. Because those are based upon the average of the 80th and 120th day count. And I'll actually input that into this formula to project next year. So I'm, I'm definitely open to any questions that board members have.
Thanks.
Giovanna, I appreciate this presentation, thank you. When the state pulls money back like that, it creates incentives. Do we, are, are, can we, can we be more aggressive about spending that money so they don't pull it back? Is there anything that we can do to change, change our, you know, how, how we're spending money to, you know, so, so it doesn't get taken back?
Mr. Mortensen, I'll, I'll answer that question twofold. Part of the reason that I included the impact aid payment schedule was that our impact aid payments were actually withheld for many years. Because it's a distribution at the federal level, when there is a court filing from one particular district, that stops impact aid payments countrywide essentially. So there was actually a filing out of a CATSIP school districts in Washington State and that actually held up impact aid payments for many years. When that was resolved, impact aid kind of came flooding into all the various districts. And that happened to be the year that the state actually had an issue with cash balances. And so we, among many other school districts who were in our similar situation, kind of got the brunt of that. The other piece of that is, is that, you know, we would hope that the state, unfortunately- unfortunately, as our cognizant oversight agency, we hope that they're doing their due diligence in fiscal management. We cannot, at any time, go out and create more money for the school district. We rely on appropriation in order to be able to run our school district. But, we do attempt to expend our budget as fully and completely as we can. Unfortunately, it was, it was kind of one of those situations that no one, unfortunately, wanted to be in at that time.
Makes sense.
Giovanna, on, on page thirty-two, on the impact aid funds, so, I'm looking at 25, 1, 4, 7. Are those the amounts that we receive each year? Is that, am I looking at that correctly?
Sure. So, where you see full lot, and lot is short for learning opportunity threshold, and it's the language the federal government used to determine the percentage of appropriation that we'll receive. We typically do not get 100% of our lot, ever. Essentially, how it works is Congress appropriates a pool of funds. Everyone applies who's eligible. And then, it takes about three years to actually fully vet all of the applications. And the law stipulates that if they run short of appropriations after beginning distribution, they just stop sending out additional money. And so, you'll see in there some years where we, we lost approximately 13% of what we were owed, because they ran short of appropriations. And so, it's, it's a balancing game that we do with our federal impact aid dollars, because we don't have a lot of control on how much we're actually going to receive. We use historical trends. And, and again, over the many years, I have had the fortunate ability to kind of create a relationship with that office in Washington State. They're very good. If I email them, they'll get back to me within 24 hours with an answer on what is happening. I, I can do nothing but praise the individuals that work in that office, because they understand how important those funds are to us.
So, on this same graph that I'm looking at, again, does it show the amount? If we would have, if we're not in the, if we weren't doing the equalization, what amount would we be getting?
Sure. So, when you look at any of those, it's essentially 75% of any of the items that we receive. So, when you see a receipt number, each time we get a payment, the state takes 75% credit for it.
Okay. Okay. So, it would have been that, like, the $18,000, we got 4, 4.5. Under fiscal year, or FY17.
Sure. FY17.
Yeah.
So, our full lot was $38 million. So, we've received three distributions so far of that. Each time we received a distribution, the state took 75% credit for it.
And, so, I know what you said earlier, that we were behind. And it looks like with this, we're pretty much caught up with impact aid monies now. And, and that was due to last year when we got two back, wasn't it? We got two of the...
Yeah. So, so, you can see, for example, the last payment for FY11 came July of 2014. So, it's multiple years that it takes them to actually catch up. And then, it was kind of a combination of sequestration from '08, '09, and that automatic 10% reduction that was beginning at the federal level, along with the lawsuit out of Washington State that actually kind of just stopped impact aid payments from moving forward.
And my last question is, so, I know with everything happening, with McKinley Academy and everything that, that we're starting, we're okay. We're okay for this year and going into next year.
Ms. Manuelito, I'd like to say that I am confident that we are okay, but I'm not satisfied that we are. We are looking at additional funding revenue sources, looking at grants, looking at additional opportunities. We always want to be sure that if there is money out there that's a good fit for our students, that we're actively seeking it. And so, you will likely see some presentations brought to you in the future. We're, we're trying to let everybody know the innovation that's happening with McKinley Academy. And we're hoping that we're going to get some people excited about joining us on that journey.
And I, I really am. That's what we talked about a lot. Kevin and I, with our legislators, was getting that $3.3 million back to our school district. You know, even, we get 75 of that back, or, you know, whatever they could give back to us is what we were trying to get, see if we could push for also, so.
Again, it's, it's, it's a difficult time when a state is in the position that we were in a year ago. And, I mean, this is, this is kind of one of those things that I warn about, and is having a cash balance and an emergency reserve. We can't go out and make a widget. I can't make the school district any more money. So, we have to make sure that we kind of plan ahead and have those emergency reserves when these things happen. And thankfully, the board has been very, very gracious in actually looking at those financial needs and making sure that those are available year to year.
So, will we be looking at our strategic plan that we have set and are aligning them with our next year's budget? Because I think, you know, having that strategic plan is always something we need to...
Sure. So, the framework, again, kind of as I started, everything we do, all the priorities that we make, is based upon the needs that we have identified for our students and how we're going to organize those needs. Our budget will always be our priority.
Any other question? Okay, thank you, Giovanna.
Thank you, board.
Wonderful report. Very informative. We go down to report number five. Board reports. Bye, dear.
I have nothing to report at this time.
The only report I have is, uh, the 26th of January, was over the 2018 Economic Long Table with the Greater Gallup Economic Development Corporation. Chris was there too, one of the panelists. And I think it maintained that we were discussing is building a workforce pipeline. The three areas, one is construction, the other one's logistic, and the other one's manufacturing. And, um, there's still more work that needs to be done. And whatever that we discuss there, I don't think has been reduced to writing yet, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah. Work that we did in terms of addressing workforce in, in our area. I think all the plans, the recommendations that were made, that hasn't been reduced to writing yet. But, once we get it, we should know at least where we need to go from there. And, uh, one of the things I mentioned there was that in the Navajo Nation, we do have a competent workforce. Only problem is, they're all working out of states and other states, working for companies and corporations, making a lot of money. And there's really nothing to bring them back over here. So, I guess that's where the construction part of it needs to take place, you know, bringing businesses in that will attract our people back over here to work and contribute to our economy here. So, there's more work to be done, and I was impressed with Chris's presentation over there. Did a good job. Oh, yeah. Mike was there too. He did a good job. Yeah. So, that's what I have to report. Any others, Priscilla?
Yeah. Other than my chapter meetings and the Health and Human Service Committee meeting that we attended, you know, one of the things that I'm very, I'm very honored to be that I attended was the Indian Education Act 15-year celebration that we did last, on the 26th, the 25th, 26th of January. You know, that was an act that really has pushed a lot of our school districts to revitalize in our language and our culture. And I think that's something that we forget sometimes, and, you know, we, we've been having a lot of struggles with. And I'm just so glad that that has ended. And we have, um, we are now working towards so many wonderful things by implementing, by multicultural back into our, into our school. We say it, but we never do it. And I think that's something that I'm so thankful about. And it was an honor to be there with several of our staff, our IUC members, our superintendent. And, you know, I think that if there wasn't that many there, and I think it just shows how invested that our, our staff and our superintendent is into abiding by the laws and continuing to advocate for our bilingual education. I also attended a bilingual conference following the Indian Education Act program or celebration. And I think that bilingual conference offered a lot of insight on the structure of a curriculum and how we can infuse these into our core classes and not making it so complicated. And, um, I wish I had my notes here. I didn't bring them. I filed everything, because I had to clean my desk. I was getting very unorganized with different things that I had on my desk. But, I, that, that conference, I'm glad that we, I saw Mrs. Freeland and Mr. Bia there. I think that was a framework that we really needed to understand. Then, the last was, of course, our McKinley County Gala and our Native American events that happened this past weekend. And, you know, thank you, everybody, for that attended. And it was a really good collaboration with a lot of our city, City of Gallup, county commissioners, even Navajo Nation, governor. I don't know if it's true, but somebody said that was the first time the governor actually came to McKinley County Day. I don't know if that was true, but I heard that. And, again, it's nice to see a lot of our staff participating and being, being involved in, in those events. I, I think that's all, sir.
Thank you. Let's continue with our agenda. The next one is just notice and communication. The Board Institute President's Day, No School. Our next Board of Education meeting on the 20th. And then, our March Board of Education meeting is on March 5th. Old Business, we do have one, but that's going to be referred, or referred to the next meeting. Moved to the next meeting, and then, uh, we go to New Business, number seven.
President, one thing I want to mention before we move on to action item was, I don't know if you guys received the email on the New Mexico School Board Association Excellent in Student Achievement Award. That, that's an award that we give, we give an award to a recipient or individual or group that have played an important role in improving student achievement at our district level. And it could be an administrator, staff, staff member, parent, community member, or volunteer. And I really would like for each of our board members to look around their school and their, and their, and their district and pick, pick a person that you think is very valuable to our, our students. And, you know, what have they done to contribute to improving student achievement? And I know one award is given free. We don't have to pay for it. But, if we, last year and the previous years, what we've done was we, we just, each picked someone within our district that we thought was doing that for, and assisting our students. And I wanted just to remind the board about that. I think it's a very valuable award. And we know we've got the individuals out there that are improving student academic achievements. So, if you guys could do that for me, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And we'll resend that email out. It should be in your email, but if not, we'll send that again.
The deadline's March 23rd.
Okay. Thank you, Priscilla. Uh, we go to New Business Action Item. Item A.
Mike? President Long, members of the board, it's that time of year again. Actually, it started a long time ago, but, uh, we want to make sure each year that we are, we have two board members that are part of the committee and that we work with to push our budget forward in respect to the board goals and our strategic planning. And so, I think typically, we open it up for nominations and approval and voting. But, it's up to you, President Long, what you'd like to do in respect to this item.
Okay. Board members? Recommendations or nominations?
Mr. President, I, uh, I would like to recommend or nominate the most experienced person on our board, Priscilla Manuelito, to, I can continue serving on the Budget Committee. I mean, it makes sense. Her experience and knowledge is invaluable in this process.
Gushine? Any other?
I would like to nominate Charles Long.
Thank you, Michael. Any other nominations, recommendations? If not, we just go with the two.
I would like to nominate Mr. Mortensen.
Gushine? So, I guess we'll have Giovanna.
Mr. President, I don't think it's too bad, like, a, a bad thing to have more of us involved. I mean, there's certain times where, you know, one of us might be unavailable for meetings. And, and so, I don't, you know, I don't think it's a big deal to have, have all three of us on the committee to help out and, and, and that way, we try to have one or two of us there. Will that jam us up with the, with the...
President Long, I would just suggest that we could do an alternate situation, where, but I would prefer that we only have two board members. That way, it's not...
And the other one could be an alternate.
Can we, can we have, you know, have the three of us and then just kind of coordinate about who's in town, who's available for any particular need?
I think two names have to be mentioned, and one could be recommended as an alternate. So, need to decide who would be the two key persons on the committee, and the third one would be the alternate. Board members?
I think...
I recommend that, uh, Mr. Chris Mortensen be the alternate. He's getting, he's getting old enough. They really, you know, cowardice, you know, coward.
Okay. Gushine? So, be myself and Priscilla. That would be the two members in the Budget Committee with Chris as the alternate. You got it? Everybody okay? So, I need, uh, motion is needed.
Make a motion that we approve the selection of Charles Long and Priscilla Manuelito as the members for the Budget Committee with Chris Mortensen as the alternate.
Gushine? Motion's been made. Roll call, John.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, board members, for that. Let's go down to Action Item B.
President Long, members of the board, I'm going to invite up Yalia Gonzalez, our Director of Special Education, to discuss Item 7B, so she can give you more information on what this entails.
Good evening. Um, we have been fortunate enough this school year to have some collaborative partners, working with our students with disabilities. The REC Two and DBR have partnered together. So, DBR is the funding source for the transition specialist, vocational transitional specialist position. And they are currently serving students in our district. They do so by attending IEPs, supporting trainings and instruction with our students. To, and, and the goal is to increase post-secondary outcomes for students with disabilities, whether that's going to college or vocational school, or it is employment. So, the proposal is... So the proposal is, with your permission, that this individual would be able to be housed in our administrative offices and work in collaboration with the IEP teams across our district to support our students and our parents. The exciting thing is that DVR is now able to help students at a younger age. So they do some employability training, as well as self-determination training and self-advocacy, as well as after-school employment and summer employment. So they would have direct access to our students at our high schools to begin with. And then we would look at expanding that to our middle schools, when and if it's appropriate.
Mr. Long, I would like to move to approve this MOU to work directly with DVR and NARCE for support, supporting our students.
Pushing. The individual that's going to be representing the DVR is going to be housed.
In our district offices, in my office specifically, at the Educational Development Center. So we have space that we would allocate.
That would be part of your motion, right?
Yes, sir.
Pushing. Motion's been made. Roll call, John.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you too for your presentation. Let's go down to, uh, Action Item C.
President Long, members of the Board, we have been there several times over the last six months, making sure that we're disclosing employees who are working on behalf of the district as referees for the NMAA. And so we have to provide acknowledge, you guys have to provide acknowledgement if we're going to continue using these individuals. And so that is what this particular action item is regards to.
Questions or comments, and what is the wishes of the board?
I would like to make a motion.
Do we get favorable calls from these officials?
I hope not. That would not be ethical.
That's a separate issue.
We should take that up.
That's the one you discuss during, that's the one you discuss during halftime.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution to grant waiver for district employees, appreciating their athletic abilities.
Thank you, Michael. Motion's been made. Roll call, John.
Ms. Manuelito?
Just with the clarification that it would be the, um, employees that are listed on our document?
Yes.
ABC? Okay, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. Let's go down to Action Item D.
Mr. Long, members of the Board, we have, the next item is in regarding Del Norte. The school building up on the north side of town. And we have been, we have vacated that building in our, with our construction of Del Norte. As a result, we have an empty building that we have had to board up due to some vandalism and making sure we do our best to keep students and other people of the community out of that particular area and out of that building. Initially, that building had a value of approximately three point two million dollars when we were occupying it. We looked over that building and looked at the opportunities that we have with that building, and there's three. One is that we can sell the property. Two is we can gift the property. Again, all these are with state approval. And number three, we can seek funding to demolish and vacate the building, I guess, and demolish the building so that we can have, we just have this property there. And so as we, as administrators, have looked over this, we are recommending that we try to sell the property at half of the valuation that it was originally, at one point six million dollars. The process to get that approved is not just approval from you, but it would also have to go to the state and go through a process in order to sell property from the district. Any big questions?
Questions, comments?
Now, would this exclude the, um, property, the piece of property there of Del Norte that the, um, McKinley County is using for their sales service or whatever?
Yeah, we would exclude that since we have a lease. It would exclude that piece of property that that tower is on.
Doesn't make any sense to give it away. Probably makes more sense to try to sell it, sell it before, you know, before any other option. How long do we want to, how long do, you know, do you anticipate the sale of that thing taking?
I couldn't project that, Mr. Mortensen, about how long that would take. I think it's a fair valuation, given the condition of the building at this particular time. There's other needs in the district, and we'd like to have that funding available to help benefit, make ourselves more efficient as a district. So we can be more efficient with our funds.
What's the likelihood that the state would go for?
I couldn't project that. I don't see why they would not allow us to do that. It's not a, it's not a piece of property that we would ever want to use again because it's so tucked back far up in that area, that community. And it's not very feasible for a lot of people, even that community, to get up to in respect to another building. We don't see land in that area being built upon for more housing. So the needs should be easily accommodating at Del Norte for all students' needs in that particular community.
What would we be able to use the proceeds for?
It's a big question. My idea, I'm not asking for this at this particular time, but I have verbally told you and others, I am really concerned about the amount of traffic that we put on the road outside here on Boardman with respect to our warehouse, maintenance, and approximately eighty or so buses that travel this road each day. I would like to potentially consider this funding to get an off-site location from Boardman to combine those facilities that we have for warehouse, maintenance, and transportation so we can get more efficient and take the load off of the street. That's just my, that's just one idea.
Is there any other entity within our school district that could use that building? For offices or programs or, I don't know, preschool or, you know, is there any other entity that we can use? First of all, I don't know.
We haven't seen a use for the building. We've kind of gone through and thought of all the options. Due to its location, due to its condition, and the amount of money it would take to kind of get everything going again, we felt it was best to sell and leave that money elsewhere. I would rather build a newer building to serve our staff and students, if possible. That particular building is not in a condition, and it's an older building. That's why we got a new building, because the state deemed that it should be done. And so, again, our, our recommendation is that we try to sell as a first option.
I move that we approve, approve the, uh, the resolution for property disposition.
Thank you, Chris. Motion's been made. Roll call, John.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. Let's go to Action Item E.
Mike, President Long, members of the Board, on our last item here, we have, actually, I probably have Giovanna Hayes come up. She may be able to field the questions a little better than I can on this one, or, or Tim, or actually Ron's here. It's hiding in the back. We, this is actually going to be a cost savings if approved. And Mr. Triplehorn can talk more about how that is with respect to our internet. But Sacred Wind wants to put the building on our JFK site on the corner. The map's kind of hard to see, but it's in that northeast corner of the property for JFK. And this would allow us to use Sacred Wind and actually get a discount compared to what we're paying to CenturyLink. Mr. Triplehorn, if you could explain some more.
Ron? Thank you, Mr. Hyatt, members of the Board. So Sacred Wind is currently in the process of redoing our wide-area network. So we call it our MO, Metro Ethernet. Currently, that's being provided by CenturyLink. As part of our MO upgrades with Sacred Wind, we loaned Sacred Wind last year through our E-Rate money. We saw significant savings with them providing that service for us instead of CenturyLink. But they need a hub in this area in order to provide us those services. And that's what this building will provide us, is the hub for our Metro Ethernet, for the whole district's network. This building will house just a few pieces of their equipment, but mostly it will be, they have told us that we can utilize that site as our disaster recovery site. Currently, we house, we rent rack space from CenturyLink at five oh five Tiheras in Albuquerque. We keep our firewall out there. We keep the backup server out there. We keep our content filter out there. And we all know with technology, you have to reset it every now and then. So we have to drive to Albuquerque to do that. So it takes a good three hours to bring the system back up if we have anything go wrong with it. So with this being located here, we would be able to just walk out the door and, and have access to that building and, and get it taken care of. They're also going to provide us that space at no cost. We currently pay between twelve and fifteen hundred dollars a month to CenturyLink to rent rack space in Albuquerque. So it'll save us about twelve to fourteen thousand dollars a year in rack space that we rent. So with that, does that answer any questions?
The board members?
The savings that we recognize from this, how are those, are those funds limited? Or how would they have to be used for the savings that we see in the future?
So those, Giovanna, do you know those funds?
Mr. Mortensen, members of the Board, many of you may or may not be aware that we take good advantage of the E-Rate program through the federal government, and that program is actually slowly decreasing available funding over a series of years. So the district is looking at every cost savings that we can in regards to communication and technology because the financial support that we've seen in the past will continue to decrease. So essentially, we're kind of forward projecting the funding that we're not going to be receiving. So some of these are cost savings that we're planning to mitigate some of the lack of federal funding that we anticipate seeing.
Sounds like it helps us to be a little more self-sufficient around, around, across the board.
Yes, very, very much so. And actually, we're, we're going to expand that, the equipment that we have in there because we get, we get charged by the amount of space we use in Albuquerque. So we're actually going to put some more servers out there. So if this building goes down, we still have phone services. We still have internet. We still have all that. Right now, this is our point of failure. If this building loses electricity, we don't have phones. We don't have internet for the rest of the district regardless of, of whether they have power or not. So, and, and we did experience that earlier this year where this, this area of town was down. It affected the entire district. That building will actually have a generator as well, so it will kick on if it loses power. So it's going to be a huge plus for the district.
I'm sure the kids will be thrilled to hear that school will go on even if we don't have power. I motion that we approve this, uh, this resolution.
Question? Thank you, Chris. Roll call, John. Motion's been made.
Ms. Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
And I believe we, uh, completed our business meeting for this evening. I stand to adjourn the meeting.
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Okay, roll call.
Manuelito?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Seven twenty-three.
Seven twenty-three. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody.